Call the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education to order. Today is Wednesday, August 16th, 2017, and the time is 7:03. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solara?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any addendums or changes to the current agenda?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay, none. I'll move on to my president's report. Good evening and welcome, community, staff, and administration. I'm Mark Curtis, and it is my privilege to be your board president. Buildings are open, staff are back, buses are rolling, and students are learning. First day of another successful school year is upon us. Much has been done over the summer to ensure that our students and staff are equipped with all that is necessary for academic achievement as well as involvement in extracurricular activities. We're eager and ready to once again begin acknowledging our wonderful and dedicated staff and students during our meetings. Welcome back. With that being said, I also look to continue our quest in doing what's necessary in lobbying our elected officials as well as the Ohio Department of Education to support our school district. Recall that last year of my efforts to further legislation that will require monies to be returned to the district of origin in the event of a finding for recovery of a charter school by either the auditor of state or the Ohio Department of Education. This piece of legislation, which is House Bill 87, was introduced by Representative Christina Rogner. So recently, a similar bill in the senate has been introduced to achieve pretty much the same thing by Senator Joe Ciavone in its Senate Bill 175. As the house version was with bipartisan support, we are hopeful that the same level of support can be achieved in the senate. However, success will only happen if members of our community remain vigilant and vocal in their support. As things continue to unfold, as always, I will keep the community abreast. This concludes my president's report. I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers.
Good evening, Mr. Curtis, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. We are so excited. First day of school is in the books. It was an early start to the day. Mr. Walker and I were at the bus garage at 5:15-ish this morning, greeting our bus drivers as they came in and serving up some donuts, of course, and then off they went to the routes and delivered all of our students safely. They were greeted by their classroom teachers at the doors. Our staff did a fabulous job over the summer, making sure everything looks number one. Board of Education, I have to tell you, if you are around our buildings, they look fantastic. Our summer staff did just an outstanding job, and I want to especially thank our Twinsburg High School staff. You know, we had a number of retirements happen at the end of June, and we had some situations happen, and the staff at the high school really banded together, and that building, you guys rock up there. It is fantastic, shiny, everything has been painted what needed to be painted. We had some new installation of some equipment up there, and it looks absolutely fantastic. So, thank you, high school staff, but also thank you to our entire custodial maintenance, grounds crew, the administrative assistants that prepared our offices, our district leadership team who took care of all of the recruiting and hiring of our staff, central office staff members who worked all summer just to make sure that we were ready to go. So, thank you to everyone who had a part in making this morning such a fantastic beginning of the 17-18 school year. You know, this is a big year for the class of 2018. The seniors are getting ready to make this the final year of their experience here in our school district. They're excited, and we are delighted, and are looking to see that this is a fantastic year for them. At the same time, coming in the other door, over at Wilcox, we have our class of 2030 starting this week, and that would be our incoming kindergarten children. So, you know, it's the cycle of life here in the school district, and it is just a fantastic place to be. So, we thank you for your support of our students. Staff members, thank you for making today such a fantastic day, and we look forward to the rest of the year going as smoothly as this morning did too. We want to welcome in a special way all of our new Tiger families. As we've been out and about today, meeting and greeting in the morning as the students were dropped off, many of our new families were dropping their children off and trying to understand, you know, how we operate in the district, what the welcome center looks like and all that, and just a delight to greet so many new families that are joining our Tiger community here. So, welcome to all of our moms and dads that are new, and all of our new Tigers as well. Board of Education, as we said, it's been a busy summer, and next board meeting, Mr. Walker will provide for you an update of the projects that had occurred over the summer. We have such fantastic things to share with everyone, but knowing that we're introducing our new staff members this evening, we wanted that to be the highlight, to introduce our new staff members, so that you get to know them a little bit, where they've come from, and what they're interested in doing. So, Mrs. McKinney will do that shortly, but we do have two commercial announcements before we get to that. The first, Board of Education, you know, we have a very tremendous relationship with Cable 9, and Dennis Suhehta from Cable 9 is the gentleman that tapes my monthly show, and he helps with our Tiger tidbits and such. Well, this summer, Mr. Suhehta and our two school resource officers, Greg Hopnisky and Ron Frisella, along with Eric Brunton over at our transportation department, and Robin Green, who is one of our top-notch bus drivers, worked together to develop a public service announcement video for our community. And if you're like me, when you're approaching a school bus, depending on the kind of road you're on, it can be a little bit confusing, and so this group of individuals worked together and recorded a public service little video, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Farthing if she could just play it for us, and I think you'll find it to be very helpful too. Thank you, Jen.
With school in session, it's important to review with everyone the laws in Ohio regarding stopping for school buses. Many people get confused as to when they should or shouldn't stop for a school bus, and it's important that everyone knows the law for the safety of all our children. Remember, if a road is three lanes or less, like Ravenna Road, Gettysburg Drive, Oxford Street, or Regatta Trail, then all traffic must stop from either direction when a bus stops to pick up or drop off any schoolchildren. If a road has four lanes or more, like State Route 82 or State Route 91, then the driver of vehicle only has to stop if they're going in the same direction as the bus. For example, if you and the bus are both traveling in the same direction on State Route 82, then you have to stop. If you are traveling in the opposite direction, you don't have to stop. In the case of a railroad crossing, when the bus stops at the crossing, you must also stop if you are traveling in the same direction as the bus. Traffic going in the opposite direction does not have to stop for the bus at the railroad crossing. Illegally passing a school bus is a very serious offense. A court appearance is mandatory, and you will be fined up to $500, and your license could even be suspended. Please remember these rules on the road to keep all our school kids safe this year.
So, just a little public service announcement, and I want to thank Mr. Brunton, who is here this evening to, he helped organize the driver and worked together with our school resource officers and our friends at Cable 9. That video is on our website. We've tweeted that out several times, and also I know the city of Twinsburg has posted that also on their community website. Just a really good reminder, because it can be very confusing, we have so many different kinds of roads in our community, and just a good reminder about what we shouldn't shouldn't do when we're approaching those school buses. So, I hope our residents find that very helpful. I know I did. Okay, that's our first community service announcement. The second one is some very exciting news that I'm going to ask Mrs. Trapphegan to come up to the podium to share. Board of Education, as you know, just last Friday, we had some tremendous news of about a $30,000 grant, and I'm going to let Mrs. Trapphegan just share a little bit about what the grant's about and how we're going to move forward. Good evening, Denise.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Powers. It's a pleasure to share with you that last Friday, we did receive news from the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction, that we received a $30,000 grant, and the purpose of this grant is an extension grant, and that means that we're extending programs that we already have. And what we did was we worked with our Beachbrook program in writing this grant, and this extension will be a part of our PBIS framework. And all of you know that we have a lot of, there's been a lot of kids suffering from opioids and our drugs and our addiction, so what we needed to do was we need to expand our multi-tier system so that we can help, you know, all our kids. And what we did was we looked at different programs, and we decided on Zones of Regulation. This is a program that can be used with preschool all the way through the adults, and it's a social educational curriculum that helps kids know what kinds of zones they are in as far as regulating their behaviors to be successful, to problem solve, and we're just really excited to get that implemented. The next thing that we're going to be doing is, I'm in the process right now of, because this is the first time that we've been awarded this grant, and so I'm setting up a new vendor with the Ohio Department of Education, and I assure you that once I get that set up, I will let Mr. Aho look at that so we make sure we're doing all our checks and balances with our numbers. But what we're going to be doing is we're going to be buying a curriculum which would be books and toolkits for all our kids, all our kids, at Wilcox and at Bissell. This is for all the teachers, and it will include counselors, psychologists, administration, and we'll also be extending it district-wide, because once we look at our programs and expanding, we want to make sure that we're doing continuity of programming district-wide, so when kids go to different buildings, they're still going to have the same type of programming. So, at Dodge and RBC and at the high school, they will be getting Zones of Regulation too, but they'll be getting it in their special ed classrooms that deal with our low-incidence kids, which would be our kids with behavior needs and our kids with low cognitive ability. And, you know, the purpose again is for our kids to make better choices. They are faced with so many things, and we as adults, when we encounter something, we know how to deal with it. If we're in a frustrating situation, we can walk away, we know to do those types of things, but our kids don't. So, one of the reasons that we wanted to implement this program is because, you know, we want to deal with wrapping our services around the total child. So, the next step will happen, once I submit the information to Marty, and we send it back to the state, they'll set up our account. There'll be a presentation at the curriculum committee meeting so that you can adopt, you know, adopt this book and program, and then we will purchase the book, and then how it's going to be rolled out is, we're going to actually bring in a trainer from the agency to train our staff, and who will be, we will be doing this through our PBIS leadership team. So, we'll take all the information back, once we get it approved by curriculum team, we'll meet with our PBIS leadership team and decide when the trainings are going to be, who else is going to be a train, and if we're going to do a trainer of the trainer, but just to implement this program for next year. And you'll hear more about this as we get into the program, because I think it's really going to develop, it's going to be a great program for all our kids. So, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Trapphegan. I just wanted to applaud Mrs. Trapphegan, who worked collaboratively with our Beachbrook social workers in the development of this grants. And again, you know, we have a strong PBIS initiative, it's been here now in its fourth year, and we continue to evolve as a school district, and we know that that's important work. We also know that when we have the interest to bring on new kinds of programs like this Zones of Regulation, to be able to seek and then obtain grant money really goes a long way, and so we are very proud of the work of Mrs. Trapphegan and our Beachbrook folks over throughout the district, and we thank you for your interest in supporting Zones of Regulation as we get underway this school year. Just one more announcement for our community, you know, we have been quite busy with a lot of students here before today. You know, today was the very first school day of the school year, but beginning August 1st, we had our marching band here, we had athletics underway. I want to thank Brian Fantone, our athletic director and coordinator of K-12 student activities, for all of his efforts as we get underway here in the fall sports season, and just to remind everyone that the most up-to-date information about all of our athletic programs can be found on the district website, and if you're looking for information about the 2017-18 athletic passes, that information is also found on the athletic department link off of the district website. So, we hope that we see lots and lots of our family and residents out supporting our kids, not only in the fall season but throughout the entire year, and again, the most up-to-date information can always be found on the district website. So, Board of Education, Mrs. Trapphegan's been busy with all of this grant work she's been doing. Mrs. Farthing's been busy with our data analysis of our scores from last year, and Mrs. McKinney has been very busy with recruiting the very finest talent, and this evening, she is going to introduce to you formally, for the very first time, wonderful, wonderful individuals who are joining us now in our Tiger family. She will talk with you first about the recruitment process and how we go through the interview process, and I have to tell you, for them to sustain themselves through our interview process, that says a lot about them to begin with, but then they bring this wonderful talent to our school district as well. So, Mrs. McKinney, good evening, and thank you for all your work.
Good evening, Mrs. Powers, Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity for me to introduce our new staff members to you. Before doing that, I'd like to publicly acknowledge the administrative team, because hiring, recruiting, and selecting the best talent is truly, truly a team effort. We, first of all, have to post our jobs with very specific detailed information from our job descriptions, and they are posted match, just to make sure people understand what they are going, what they're applying for, and the jobs are posted for the allotted time stipulated in our master agreements, and then the administrators or supervisors, principals and supervisors, then review all the applicants and select those applicants that match or have the credentials that are outlined in the job posting, and then they begin the first level of interviewing. Once that first level of interviews is complete, then that's with the administrative team, the building team, I should say, because oftentimes that includes teachers or other building personnel. Then the second round of interviews is with myself and the directors at the central office level, along with the building principal. And then the final, third level of interviews is again with the principal, central office team, and Mrs. Powers, superintendent, for final interview, final round, and selection. So, that is our process. So, most of the candidates sitting here have gone through a two or three levels of interviews, so I commend them for staying the course and surviving that process. So, again, I congratulate all of these new hires, and welcome, welcome again to our district. So, with that, I'm going to ask that, when I called the schools, if the principals and also Board of Education, are you guys coming down to shake hands with them? And the principal for that building will come down. I'm going to start with central office, so. And I, when preparing my notes for the introductions, I did ask the candidates for an interesting fact about them that they would like to share with the world or you tonight, and then via cable TV, the Twinsburg world, so. So, you'll hear some interesting things about our candidates. I'm going to start with central office, Catherine Roberts, who's Business Manager's Administrative Assistant. Catherine has spent 22 years working in the education field. She has worked in the Stowe-Munro Falls and Cuyahoga Falls school districts as pupil services secretary, superintendent's secretary, and human resource secretary. She also worked as the office manager at Redmond Funeral Home. The interesting thing about Catherine is she loves to bake and decorate cakes. Stay up for the central office table. I know you were trying to sit down, I know. And, okay, again, her interesting fact is she loves to bake and decorate cakes. Next person is Beth Mariola. She's the district supervisor of innovative technology. Beth is not new to the district, but she is new to this position. Beth started her career subbing and teaching language arts at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Most recently, she was assistant principal at Dodge, and we welcome her to this new position. So, these are our central office hires for the 2017-18 school year. Can you ask? All right. Wilcox, please. Allison Leniker, Wilcox Instructional Assistant. Allison is a licensed special education teacher. She worked three years as a special education teacher in the Mayfield City School District. She left teaching to stay home with her children. She returned to the workforces as a Ren Hill sub last year. Allison enjoys traveling and has been to Africa four times. Kira Miller, Wilcox kindergarten teacher. Kira attended Wilcox, Bissell, Dodge, RBC, and graduated from Twinsburg High School. She is now teaching in the room where she attended preschool as a student. She is excited to have come full circle to be working in her community. In her spare time, she loves to travel and sing. She's a huge Cleveland Indians fan and spends most of her summer at Progressive Field. Joan O'Hara, Wilcox Instructional Assistant, has a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in community counseling. She comes to us, most recently, from the Lollipop Cooperative Preschool, where she was an educational assistant. Previously, she worked for Belfry JCB and Green County Children's Services as a mental health counselor and childcare worker. Joan enjoys volunteering in the local Twinsburg Community Theater. Wilcox new hires for the 2017-18 school year. Oh, whoa, sorry, I did it again. I have two more Wilcox people, I'm sorry. I didn't turn my sheet. All right. Sarah Perrow, Wilcox kindergarten teacher. Not new to the district or the building. For the last five years, she was the Title I reading teacher at Wilcox, and is happy to be receiving her own class in a building and with a team that she is familiar with and happy to be a part of. Melinda Phillips, lunchroom playground assistant. Melinda was hired in April of 2017. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology. She worked as an activities director at Alter Care before joining our team. She enjoys reading, and her favorite author is Stephen King. So, they're not here, so I was correct the first time, but in any case, welcome, Wilcox Samuel Bissell Elementary School, new hires. Joyce Chekai, cook at Bissell. Not here. Joyce returned from her job as a service rep for the, returned to the workforce from her job as a service rep for the Social Security Administration by subbing as a cook in our district. Immediately after retirement, Joyce worked as operations manager for Jill's Barbecue and a customer service representative for Stan's Bakery. She's a longtime Tribe fan, and she loves to cook for family and friends. All right. Sally Petit, Bissell and Dodge music teacher. Sally has been subbing for a year and a half, most recently in North Ridgeville, where she taught fourth and fifth grade choir, fourth and fifth grade general music, and fifth grade band. She has five siblings, and four of the five are teachers, and three are music teachers. She played softball in high school and was recruited to play softball in college. She and her husband are hot air balloon enthusiasts. They travel to hot air balloon festivals and events. In her spare time, she likes to crochet. Denise Sevages, Bissell cook manager. Denise has worked for the district for 19 years. She resigned from the position of manager in training to become the cook manager at Bissell. Josephine Zabel, Bissell Instructional Assistant, not new to the building or district. She was hired as a one-to-one instructional assistant, and she is now going to be an assistant working with second and third, working in second and third grade classrooms. Checking my pages here. Bissell and Dodge music teacher hire, Sally Petit, welcome. Beverly Genova, who's a Dodge cook, could not be here tonight, but I want to talk about her and let you know she was hired in January of 2017, so she was not formally introduced at that time, so I wanted to acknowledge her now. Prior to this, she worked as a servant at the Winkin' Lizard. She has a twin sister and lives in Twinsburg. Leitha Goth, Dodge Instructional Assistant. Leitha has worked as an instructional assistant for 23 years. Most of those years were spent in the ED unit. She comes to us from the Bedford City School District. In her spare time, she loves to make jewelry and bake during the holidays. Mary Popovic, a Dodge cook, she also will not be in attendance today. She was also hired in January of 2017, but again, we wanted the opportunity to introduce her as well. She has an accounting degree from Ball and Wallace, and she has three great children, and she enjoys, everybody's laughing because when I introduced her to the staff, she's a very younger woman, I said she has three great grandchildren, so I promised her I would get it right tonight. So, she has three great children that she enjoys spending time with. Julianne Walker, Dodge Assistant Principal. Julianne has worked in education for 22 years. She began her teaching career in the Bedford City School District as a Title I teacher. After being riffed, she secured a teaching position with the Maple Heights City School District. She returned to Bedford when her position reopened. She taught third and fourth grade and served as the data coach for the last 10 years. And the interesting fact about her is she is a huge Prince fan. Ben Willock, Dodge math science teacher. Ben came to Dodge as a long-term sub in October of 2016. While completing that assignment, a Dodge teacher relocated, and Ben secured a permanent assignment. Ben loves monster trucks, baseball, and destroying the dark side of the force. Dodge new hires for the 2017-18 school year. Welcome and congratulations. All right, we're done. RB Chamberlain Middle School. Jennifer Nelson? I forgot her again, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Come on down. Okay, Jennifer, I am going to apologize to you on cable television. Okay. She is going to be an instructional assistant at Dodge. So, Jennifer subbed with us before securing this position, and congratulations, Jennifer, and I'm so sorry. RB Chamberlain Middle School now. Okay, then. Kayla Bass, RBC language arts teacher. Kayla is a graduate of Twinsburg High School. She graduated from Kent State University in 2016. Since then, she has been subbing to gain as much teaching experience and knowledge before securing her first teaching job. She completed a long-term sub experience as a language arts teacher in the Riverside Local School District. She credits Lynette Jimenez and Natalie Lonze for her decision to become a language arts teacher. Interesting fact about Kayla is Kate Middleton is her role model. Kim Lysia Brown, RBC Instructional Assistant. Kim Lysia has worked as a substitute for seven years while earning her bachelor's degree in English from Cleveland State University. Before that, she worked as an accounting clerk at Cleveland State University. She is interested in someday starting a whole agricultural program and a dog training program for students. Seth Hudson, RBC- Seth Hudson, RBC Academic Coach. Graduated from the University of Akron. He comes to us from Woodridge, where he was the library teacher and he assembled the entire library curriculum for third, fourth, and fifth grade students. He also managed the homework assistance program in Woodridge. Seth is an avid reader and writer and he tries to schedule one hour of reading and one hour of writing every day. John Cutress, RBC STEM Teacher. John has been teaching for twenty-two years. He started his career in Canton City, teaching technology education in grades six, seven, and eighth. He also taught high school in Canton Local for twelve years, where he started the Project Lead the Way pre-engineering program. He is excited to be returning to middle school to start the Project Lead the Way pre-engineering program at RB Chamberlain Middle School. He likes to cook and if he wasn't a teacher, if he wasn't a great teacher, he'd be a great chef. Lisa Moyer, RBC Assistant Principal. Lisa started her career in the computer tech field, but she was not fulfilled by that job. She got laid off and took that opportunity to go back to school and get her special education teaching license. She taught in Cleveland at Charles Elliott Middle, Union Elementary, John Adams, and Rhodes High School before being promoted to assistant principal at East Clark School in Cleveland. She is a resident of the district, had two children graduate from Twinsburg High School, and was a chairperson of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Blue Ribbon Schools Living Campaign. Melissa Walters, RBC Language Arts Teacher. Melissa completed a full year as a long-term sub last year at RBC after returning to Cleveland from North Carolina. She involved her students in the Scholastic Art and Writing Contest. One of her students won the National Gold Medal and Best in Grade Award for her short story. Mrs. Walters accompanied her to New York City and proudly witnessed her student receiving her award at Carnegie Hall. Now, all of that was accomplished as a sub, so we can't wait to see what she does now that she's a hired teacher. So, this is the RBC new hires for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Congratulations. Twinsburg High School. Retired... Mr. Bash retired from Ford Motor Company and began subbing for the district as a janitor. After subbing for three years, Mr. Bash has now landed a spot and is happy to be part of the high school team. In his spare time, Ed likes to run races for charity and work in his vegetable garden. Laura Boosie, who was our new THS Family and Consumer Sciences teacher, was teacher by day and parent by night. She's at her son's open house tonight, so... Ms. Boosie graduated from the University of Akron. She comes to us from Strongsville, where she was a long-term Family and Consumer Sciences teacher. Prior to that, Laura taught for two years at Ravenna High School. Laura is proudly Latino and challenges anyone to make a better salsa than her. Ning Lung Chang, Twinsburg High School Chinese Teacher. Ms. Chang has a love for the language and for teaching. She has taught Chinese, most recently, at Copley Fairline Middle School. Before that, she taught Chinese at Roxborough Middle School in Cleveland Heights, Laurel School, Hawken, Chagrin Falls, and Polaris Career Center. She also teaches Chinese classes on Saturdays. She loves to travel and Vancouver, British Columbia is her favorite place to travel. Erin Mishak, THS Instructional Assistant. Erin holds a bachelor's and master's degree in education. She taught seventh grade math for nine years. She left the profession to stay home with her twins and is happily returning to education as the instructional assistant at Twinsburg High School. Ken Pachiliak, THS Head Custodian. Again, not new to the district or the high school. Kenny was assistant custodian at Twinsburg High School for nineteen years before taking this position as the head custodian. James Rowland, THS Janitor. Has subs as a janitor in Twinsburg and Hudson for the last three years. He attended RB Chamberlain Middle School but did not attend Twinsburg High School. He graduated from Western Reserve Academy and has a political science degree from the College of Worcester. Melissa Wade, Twinsburg High School Janitor. Has a degree in psychology from the University of Akron. She has a love for animals and has worked as an animal adoption specialist and a veterinary assistant. She is an animal activist and an animal adopter. She will take in, and she told me to emphasize, any animal vet needs adopted. So, this is the Twinsburg High School new hires for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Last, but certainly not least, is transportation. A lot of our drivers could not be here. We have one driver in attendance, but I'm going to tell you about the other drivers, even though they couldn't be here tonight. And Eric Runton's coming up to help us, Transportation Supervisor. Lavanda Creo, bus driver, was hired in March of two thousand seventeen. Had not had an opportunity to be formally introduced and... not even tonight, but I'll tell you a little bit about her. She previously, before being hired as a bus driver for the Twinsburg Schools, previously ran an in-home daycare for military families. Tina Falconberry, a bus driver, has enjoyed working for the district so much that she left in two thousand sixteen and returned in two thousand sixteen. Before coming to Twinsburg as a bus driver, she drove a bus in Durham. Jonathan Fennell, Transportation Mechanic. Graduated from Twinsburg High School. He attended CVCC, where he developed his mechanic skills in their automotive repair program. He comes to us, most recently, from Pepsi, where he was a mechanic and he was a part of a team that serviced all of their vehicles. He is happy to be part of our transportation department and be part of the mechanic team that had all the buses passenger inspection this summer. Gia Herrot, Bus Driver. Has a love for working with children. She most recently was the director at the Learning Planet Preschool. And she is going to bring that love for working with children to us as a bus driver, working with our children. Paul Terry, Bus Driver, was hired in September two thousand sixteen. Before joining us, Paul worked at Swage Lock for twelve years. She is the lone transportation bus driver that showed up tonight, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations. All right, that is it. Those are our hires for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Welcome, welcome, and congrats again to everyone.
Again, we'd like to thank the district leadership team and Mrs. McKinney, and we had a number of our staff beside the administrators who helped with the interview process, started way back in the spring, continued actually through this week, and so we thank everybody for their diligence efforts and, you know, we're really proud of being a member of our Tiger family and, you know, as you are being onboarded now, I just want to say this is a tremendous opportunity for you to be a part of such a supportive community. We have such outstanding children here, forty-three hundred Tigers that enter our buildings every single day, and we thank you for your interest. We appreciate you so very much. You are very talented. We only hire... the Board of Education only hires the very best talent to work here in our community. And it's a tremendous responsibility when you become employed by the Twinsburg Board of Education. They expect a great deal of dedication, but honestly, they support us at the same time. So, thank you so very much for being here this evening. Have a great school year and thanks in advance for all that you're going to do to help our kids learn and grow throughout the seventeen eighteen school year. Mr. Curtis, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I want to echo the comments by the superintendent. I've made comments similar to this with respect to our hiring process. It's extremely rigorous and that's for a reason. We want to make sure that we're bringing on the right people for this district because our children deserve it. We, as a board, want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our staff are equipped with all of the things necessary, whether that be supplies, whether that be professional development, whatever the case may be. We want to make sure that we honor our commitment to make sure that you're well-prepared to deliver all of the services and things that our students need. So, thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. We welcome you. We're happy that you're here and we're looking forward to a great school year. Thank you. Is that it? Okay. All right, well, we'll move on to committee reports.
Mr. Curtis, if I could interrupt here.
Yes.
The staff has been here very early this morning and they're preparing for children tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
So, if it's okay with you...
I should probably...
Of course, you can stay if you'd like to.
Yeah, if you'd like to stay. We would love it if you stayed, but if you want to go, this would be the time to go. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm used to hearing that with students, parents, not staff. Thank you for that reminder. I'm used to seeing students and parents in the audience and not staff, so, thank you. So, we will move on to committee reports. Did... do we have any reports? Did any committees meet or do we have any reports on committees?
Maybe just as a preview, because a policy did meet a couple of weeks ago, and tonight we do have the first reading of forty-some policies, which we'll go into when the motion's read, but for those that want to know what forty-some policies look like, that's quite a bit, and all of our policies can be found online. The ones that are online, of course, are the ones that are already authorized. There are both policies and corresponding, what they call administrative guidelines, which allow the administration to enforce the policies and utilize those within the district. We are members of what's called NEOLA, which is the Northeast Ohio Legal Association, so periodically, a lot of this is recommendations. It may be changed based on a House bill, like Mr. Curtis mentioned, or some other change in law that requires us to tweak our policies. So, tonight is the first reading. We haven't done this in a while, so I'd like to mention the process. My colleague, Ms. Tina Davis, will both go through some of the policies and the motions at that time, and then the district and the public has another two weeks or so to look at those policies, then we all have a second reading. So if there's any questions on those, I, you know, direct those to the administration. So, miss anything? Tina, that's kind of the overview of what's coming.
Very good.
Any other committee reports? I typically do report as part of the committee reports, as I also sit on the Board of Education for the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. I typically do updates for them as well. As they have started, we do... we have a new superintendent who is beginning the new school year, and so that board will meet in a couple of weeks. They actually have a special meeting this evening, but obviously it conflicts with this meeting, so I'm not able to be there, but the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting formally, and then thereafter, probably next month's meeting, I'll provide an update for what's going on at the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. Okay. All right, next on the agenda is administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Board of Education, as you know, for more than six months now, the school district has been researching different organizations that can provide to our students and our staff a training with regard to issues surrounding diversity, tolerance, and respect. And Board of Education, as you know, we have been quite concerned around these topics. Not only do we have the responsibility to teach our children and support them as they go out to the world of college or the world of work and as they exit Twinsburg High School, but we also have the responsibility as a school district to help build character and help them to understand that individuals may not look like you, they may not think like you, they may come from homes that are different than yours, they may come from homes where moms and dads may not always be together, single-parent homes and homes where moms are different than when perhaps we grew up, or dads are different than when we grew up. And so, there are a lot of things that our kids are encountering as they grow in society today that we have to help them to understand, embrace, and be able to move on as young adults and then into their further life. And back in January, Board of Education, you know that we, as a school district, began to research these organizations that potentially could help us provide the tools that our teachers need and that our families seek and that our students can use to grow into successful adults. And so, I'm very pleased this evening to ask Jasmine King from the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio to come forward. Jasmine met with members of our administrative staff, goodness, months ago now, and also our counselors throughout the school districts, as well as our Beechbrook social workers, to share with us some of the ways that she may be of assistance and her organization in tackling some of these topics that are important for our children to know, grasp, and understand. And so, this evening, Jasmine, if you would kindly use the podium so that we're on microphone and so that your important words are recorded for our community, if you would like to provide us with a bit of an introduction to our proposal, which the Board of Education will consider this evening for approval. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to come and speak with you guys. I know I only have a couple of minutes. They told me fifteen minutes, so I'm going to try to get through an introduction of the Diversity Center, as well as answer any questions that you have. And so, yes, we have been working since January to make sure that there's total understanding around the programming that we have, and we're very excited to potentially have Twinsburg onboard with us and be a part of our DCE family. So, I'm going to run through just a little bit about it, a little bit about the history of the Diversity Center. Previously, I was an educator for eleven years. I have a degree in early childhood education and psychology. I also have a degree in child and family development. I taught for eleven years and I'm now the director. And I heard that you guys hired a Family and Consumer Science teacher, and that's what I taught for ten years of the eleven years that I taught. So, it started in nineteen twenty-seven as the National Conference of Christians and Jews, and our mission is to eliminate bias, bigotry, and racism, and our vision is to create communities where all people are connected, respected, and valued. And currently, we are a part of NFJC, the National Federation for Just Communities. So, we're a nonprofit that has been around a long, long time. We wish that in two thousand and seventeen, we did not still have to do the exact same work that they set out to do in nineteen twenty-seven, but our mission has been the same all these years. So, our continued goal is to open minds with our school and youth programming. We reach nearly ten thousand students each year. Last year, we worked with one hundred and nine schools around nine counties. Changing lives, building stronger communities, those are our goals. We have a number of different programs, and our programs are in your folders. The programs that I'm going to talk about that are in the contract are going to be with your elementary school, with your middle school, is the ULE program, your rethink labels program, and then we're going to do some HVDI possibly, and then invite you guys out to our retreat and our middle school and high school conferences. So, you'll see all of these in the proposal. Everything that we do is grounded in social-emotional learning, and so with that being said, we are also aligned to common core, that teaching tolerance is diversity standards, and we're grounded in experiential learning and social learning theories. So, those are the theories that really kind of ground what it is that we do. Everything that we do has to do around this social-emotional competency, so self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. So, our ULE program is kind of the main program that we have. This is a program that deals with all of our diversity topics. It's an onsite middle and high school program, and so what we're doing here is we're trying to increase cultural competence for our students, build leadership skills, and create inclusive environments. There are a number of different topics that the schools can choose from, and so... And so, we even can do customized curriculum as well. So, as you see, we cover the gamut of diversity topics. The way that the ULE program looks is a school will choose a four-session program or a six-session program. We always start with Diversity 101 and we end with student leadership. And the topics that are in between are of the school's choice. So, if a school would like you to come in and talk about problem-solving and decision-making, civic engagement, that's what we'll talk about. If a school wants us to come in and talk about sports and society, real interesting topic that looks at race and socioeconomic and sports, we come in and talk about that. So, those are all your topics. And then, how we kind of gauge, and this is where Mrs. Powers has a real interest, is for us to gauge the climate of the schools. We can do cultural climate surveys with your students, with your staff, with your parents, that allow us to identify which areas are of most concern. So, there are twenty questions that we come in and we use turning points. We use clickers to get data. We analyze the data. And then, what we do is we make programmatic recommendations from the data. This data can help drive future programming in the classroom or additional areas that we may see fit to move forward with doing additional programming. Elementary programming, those are some examples of the elementary programming that we have for choice. I told you about our campus conferences and retreats. We do those each year. These are out-of-school events. Restorative practices is new to what we do. We've all been trained in restorative practices. I actually just went through my third training in restorative practices where we are trying to get schools to think about their suspension rate and how they discipline students. And on the other hand, how do we build community through circles and circle practices? Diversity Through the Arts is another program that we really, really have, which is a, that we have. It's a really good program. It's a grant-funded program, so there's no charge for this program. Schools will invite us in and we actually talk about diversity through art projects. Rethink Labels is The Power of Words. It's a video that's on our website. And we would love to be able to do this program with your students. It talks about the power of words. If you look here, some of the students are holding a sign and they're asked to write either the best thing someone has called them and then, on the other hand, the worst thing someone has called them. Very powerful conversations come out of this program. We talk about stereotypes and becoming an upstander. We also dive into educator training. And so, we have a number of professional development sessions that we can come in and work with the staff. We also can tweak it to work with our parents as well. So, we've done some parental after-school in the evening and on weekend programs for parents in some communities as well. Another opportunity for your students to get involved, each year, we have the Educator of the Year Award that is recognized at our humanitarian awards dinner. The large dinner nominates someone in the community and it honors a corporate or nonprofit leader. But we also will give an award to an educator who is recognized for their unwavering support of diversity education in the schools and communities. And we also will honor a student group. So, last year, our Berea Pride Group won the award and our educator from Laurel won the award. So, each year, we honor... How our students get involved is once they begin to do programming with us, we invite them back to be student ambassadors. And they actually get to sit at the tables at the dinner. So, Key Bank, Medical Mutual, Cleveland Clinic will purchase a spot at the table for them. The students sit at the table and share their experiences around camp and the programming that we do in the schools. So, this for many of them is the very first time that they've had such a formal experience and been able to share their experiences with the presidents and CEOs of these companies. Our annual Walk, Rock, and Run, this is our community event. We bring six thousand people down each year in May to celebrate the diversity in Northeast Ohio. Some of the last pieces, Lead Diversity is a ten-month program that we have. It's a professional program where professionals meet once a month to talk about the same things that we go into middle school, high school, and elementary school. We do it for professionals as well through our shift consulting department. And then, last piece that I'll talk about is Higher Education and Young Adults, which is kind of our newest division to what we do. It's what we realize is that a lot of our students are graduating and they still want to be involved in what we do. And so, we have a great alumni base now that are going to a lot of schools locally. And we begin to partner with them, invite them back to complete community service, internships, host sessions at our conferences, and become camp counselors. We've also been reaching out to Res Life and to work with some of the first-year students as well. So, this is our newest division to what we do at DCNEO. And then, I won't talk about shift, but the same thing that we do for schools, we have a department that goes in and works with small businesses, large businesses. They work with human resources. They make sure their laws are aligned and make sure their policies and procedures are aligned. We also get one-on-one coaching requests. So, we have individuals that are trained on one-on-one coaching. It usually comes from the court system. If there has been some legal dispute about something someone is being sued over discriminatory acts, they may be mandated to have one-on-one diversity coaching. And so, we provide that as well. And we could do that in schools as well. So, if you take a look at the, the contract that we created, which is in your folder, what you will see is that the first piece on here, on that first page, is student facilitation training. This is one of the pieces that I would advise that we do. Student facilitation training, we're gonna get a number of your high school or middle school students, and I think here, we're just gonna focus on high school students, trained as student facilitators, how to host honest conversations. These student facilitators, which would be your student leaders, would then be able to assist us when we come in and do additional programming, as well as other leadership opportunities in your school. So, it's really giving them the tools. We talk about communication skills. We talk about how to handle these kind of very heated topics and have brave spaces and safe spaces in handling these topics. So, that's what you see on the first page. If you turn the page, you'll be able to see the cultural climate survey, the costs associated with the cultural climate survey. Right now, we are prepared to conduct the survey in seventh, eighth, ninth grade with the questions that we have. And then, we would like to work with your fourth-grade team to modify our questions for the fourth graders. Because some of the questions would be a little bit too much for fourth grade. And so, we definitely want to have the input from your fourth-grade team to modify those questions. Based off of that data, your superintendent will move forward with how we can make sure that we're assisting the students and the educators in the areas that they need most. And that data will go, we'll present that data however you would like us to present that data. We can present it here at the board or we can just present it at each individual school. Action Planet is a complimentary program that we do. And this will allow us to work with either clubs or organizations, work with all of your students, and in your cases, working with all of your students to think about how we can make a change and allow the students to have input on some of the things that we're gonna do moving forward. So, we have Action Planet in there. And so, if we turn over, you'll see Rethink Labels. Rethink Labels is the program that I told you about, which is also a complimentary program that we do. And then, we have our elementary diversity workshops. You'll be picking two of the sessions that are listed there. And so, we'll work with your elementary staff to see what would be the best fit for them. And then, once we turn to the next page, this is where it begins to get a little more complicated. So, you would be able to pick two of the sessions. We have already included the Action Planet and then Rethink Labels. So, dependent on what the principals have suggested and we have had the principals make some suggestions of what they feel would be best kind of addressed in their schools right now. And so, we've been in communication with the principals. Even when I was in the hallway, they came up to talk to me. So, we're, we're trying to kind of map it out and see how this could work and how this could fit into what we do here at Twinsburg already. And if you turn the page, you'll see your participation in our out-of-school programs, which would be our Fall Retreat, which would be our Spring and Middle School Conference. And this is where you would take your students, you would bring them to us. Our Fall Retreat brings about twenty schools together. Our Spring Conference for High School brings thirty-five schools together. Our Middle School Conference brings another twenty-five schools together. When you talk about breaking stereotypes, when you talk about breaking down barriers, we bring all of these students together and talk about these students' experiences, their common experiences, and their differences is very powerful. The last page, you'll see our HBDI, which is the professional development that we would like to host for the staff. So, HBDI is a whole-brain thinking model. And actually, to me, it's the best model that I've been trained under. It's kind of like Myers-Briggs a little bit, but it uses colors. And so, you're color-coded. And so, in our office, we, we say, well, you know that person is blue, so they like things done a certain way, or you know the person is green. And by understanding this, it really makes you reevaluate a whole-team approach. If you know certain people are certain colors and your administration team will get a report. And so, you will know everyone's color. You will know who works well together. You will know why you bump heads with other people. And it's not so much personality. It is, we both like to learn differently or we both approach things a tad bit different. So, there's four quadrants. And then, we do a whole presentation to learn how to utilize that for a whole-brain approach. And so, really, really neat piece with that. And then, there's a lot of legality there that we have been working through diligently. So, that is it in a nutshell. I think I did fifteen minutes, right? So, I can answer any questions that you have regarding this. Again, we've been working back and forth to really customize this for you. And now, if we're able to move forward, what we will be able to do is work with each of your principals. You've been assigned two program specialists for the district if we move forward. And those program specialists will be working to make sure that you get all of your programming. For example, we were able to talk with the middle school principal on the phone and already tentatively, by looking at this contract, sixteen days will go on our calendar and you will have sixteen of our days. And we will be in the district in the middle school for sixteen days. What we know about social-emotional learning through research is that ten hours of contact can show change. So, yeah.
Ms. King, can you give the Board of Education some examples of other school districts or schools? You mentioned Laurel, that your organization has been in. And then, some of the changes or positive results that your work has done there?
So, I'm working on my EDD currently. And actually, social-emotional learning and emotional intelligence EQ is my focus. That's what I'm gonna be doing my dissertation on. And one of the things that is very pressing is that cultural climate change is hard to measure. And so, it's, it's even harder sometimes to measure social-emotional change. How do you measure? We're trying to teach a student how to be nice. So, sometime, it is hard to, to measure. So, I love what they say at Solon to me. They say, Solon told me, we've been here in your district. You've, you've been with us for four years. And we cannot explain it, but the terms that you use, the language that you have presented to our students, the responses that you expect the students to give in the face of difficulty, it has changed the culture here at the school. Now, we just recently started to do cultural climate survey with them. So, we don't have data from four years ago, but we're trying to do some long-term data with Solon right now. Rocky River is another school that we've been working very diligently with. And they definitely will tell us, it's, it's hard to grasp. But you guys come in, we do our sessions. And with Rocky River, we do continuous sessions. And it was, this was one of the things we talked about with Ms. Powers, is that one-touch point, a targeted program doesn't work as well as a universal program where we have more touch points and we're in the district for a longer amount of time. Some schools only have us come in for one session. We can come in for one session. But when we're thinking about sustainable change, how many times do we need to come in and talk with the kids and make sure that the language is embedded? So, we were at Laurel doing PD this morning. We have additional sessions that we'll be doing with Laurel. Again, we worked with one hundred and nine schools last year. These were just some of the schools. We work with CMSD schools. I'm contracted for thirty days with one CMSD school right now, with JFK. I actually will be there tomorrow. So, schools that this has become a part of their mission, and not only with social-emotional learning and diversity training, we also know that this helps move the academic needle. If we do, if we look it up, research says eleven percentile points for social-emotional learning. So, this can improve academics as well. Why? Because it creates a safe space. When students feel that they're in a safe environment, they can focus on their academics.
Thank you. Very, very thorough presentation. I appreciate the detail. I'm curious, as it is, as much as things change, things remain the same. Any one of your particular programs has stand out dealing with maybe the climate of the last twenty-four months and, and what we might see in the media? And which one of your programs that you feel, you know, has addressed this or is starting to address that?
Rethink Label, The Power of Words. Definitely, there's a piece there and we would be doing that with the students. There's a modified program up underneath here. For the older kids, and I'm saying this first, but I'm going to back up. In Diversity 101, we teach the students about what the cycle of oppression is. We teach them about minority and majority groups. We talk about hate. We talk about being an upstander. So, we really dive in. This is one of the things that we tell the educators. We try to meet with the educators prior to us coming in to the schools. So, for example, I have meetings coming up with a number of schools that we work, where we come and we present what it is that we do to the staff, so they know what it is. Because the students need to be prepped. And in the Diversity 101 workshop and some of the other workshops, if we're talking about religious tolerance and respect, that seems to be a big one. And our newest piece now is our immigration program. And so, all of those trends can address kind of the climate of what is, what is going on. What is even bigger is if we look at educator training, if we're able to come in and speak with your educators about creating culturally competent curriculum in classrooms, or we come in and we talk to the educators about building relationships and creating inclusive educational environment, how can we empower the educators to be able to have these conversations as well? So, when we step out of your building, your educators feel safe having these conversations as well.
Thank you. And can you just touch briefly on the size of the staff? Part-time volunteer, paid, credentials? You mean, just smattering? I'm just curious.
Right. So, all of my program specialists, well, eighty-seven percent of my program specialists are former educators. So, I have one that's not, but she has degrees in, her degrees are diversity-related. They're Women's Studies, they're Gender Studies. Those are, those are her degrees. Staff of total in the office, fifteen. There are six on the school and youth side. But I have program specialists in the shift consulting side that can help assist as well. So, in our Laurel PD this morning, one of the individuals was from shift consulting. She had to pinch-hit because somebody wasn't here. They were still on vacation. And so, everyone has a degree and most of them are educators.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, you educate the staff and of course, the students. Is there a way you keep the parents in touch periodically about what's going on? Because these kids are getting all this wonderful experience and, and lots of open discussions. And then, come on, your high school kids will say maybe, and ten words or less, what happened throughout the whole week with this.
Well, at least they didn't learn anything.
Right.
We do have a letter that goes out prior to the program that we give to the schools. And it's up to the schools to release the letter if they would like to release the letter. We really encourage each of the schools to release the letter. We give the, we give the letter to them in Word format, so they can modify the letter and they can add their own wording to the letter. If they would like to take it and put it on their own letterhead, that's fine. We do not have anything that we do right now that is constant follow-through. But it is something, if that is what you would like us to have constant follow-through, it was something that we can talk with the principals about and we can make sure that we address that. So, right now, if we don't want to do six sessions in a school, we may be there six weeks or twelve weeks, we don't do a follow-up after each session with the parents. We kind of do this letter in the beginning. These are all of the topics. These are the dates that we're going to be here. And it would be up to the parents to kind of follow-up with their, with their students, yes. And then, you know, one thing I had to tell one of the schools.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't want, I want to, I want to make sure you're standing in front of the mic so we catch your, your comments.
Sorry.
Thanks.
One of the schools, they asked if the parents could come into the session. I have no problem with that. But I guess you just have to be very careful. It's kind of open. I hate to say open in a can of worms, but if you want us to do a session with the parents and the students after school, we definitely can do that. But if you open that up, then you'll have twenty, thirty parents coming in during the school day to try to sit in a diversity session. So, you really have to think about how we want to approach getting the parents involved.
At least with the letter, you're kind of touching base and so, the parents can at least open up conversation with the kids and say, oh, I know your work, you guys are going to be talking about this. It gives us some kind of guidelines.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there ongoing online resources and things that are offered or directed or that come up, that bubble up into? that bubble up into the courses that the students or to your point, the parents or teachers? Are there online resources that they can reference?
We don't have additional online resources as follow-up. But once a school has contracted with us, the follow-up, for example, if one of your classes, we had a serious conversation and we could not finish the conversation and we needed to schedule an additional follow-up with that class, we will come back and no charge. Once you're contracted with us, if you needed consultation on wording, we have schools that have had race hate incidents. They've had incidents with their students. We've come in and we've done restorative circles with their students. So once you're contracted with us, if things arise during the school year that we are contracted with you, we will make sure that we address those.
So I had a couple of questions as far as a timeline. So as I look at this, it says that it's a sixty to ninety minute session. For example, the elementary diversity workshop. Is that you're coming in on one occasion and speaking to grade four? Is it a one session? Is it multiple sessions?
It depends on what the teacher would like. And the school districts are very, very different. Some schools will allow us to come in and split that time up. So some schools will allow us to come in. And usually for fourth grade, we probably will not go longer than sixty minutes. We give a little bit of cushion in there. But we can do part one and part two if that's what the educator wants. Some schools have us do a part one and part two. So we'll do forty-five minutes one day, we'll come back and do forty-five minutes another day. So we work with the educators. And as soon as the principal has an initial meeting, we sit down with the educators, whoever classes we're going to be in or with the principal, and we figure out that timeframe and what's going to work best for them.
But typically, so for example, this is a one session. This fee is for one session at the school?
For. For, so if you're looking at the.
You know, looking at elementary diversity workshops, you know, if you, let's say we were to pick two sessions, Diversity 101 and Anti-Bullying. You would touch on those two subjects. It would be approximately sixty minutes long. It would be a one session. You would come in on, you know, October thirteenth.
So this costs us for a total of four sessions. This costs us for two diversity workshops and your action planning and your rethink labels. So you see it says two sessions from the list below that will be offered in addition to action planning and rethink labels. What we also do, if you consider, is the number of students. So we divide it by like twenty-five is one class. And so the way that we build, we build per class that we go into. And so if you see it, you have three hundred and thirteen students divided by twenty-five. We round it down, that's thirteen workshop groups. So you're billed by thirteen times each session of the two sessions because action planning and rethink labels. Now, the breakdown is not included in this contract. It was more included in the proposal and we went back and forth to make sure it was modified correctly.
Right. And I still want to make sure that I'm understanding. So you would actually have the entire three hundred and thirteen students in front of you? Or you are going to go into each classroom or that's to be determined?
We're going to be going into each classroom.
Okay.
So during one day, we may be in three classes or four classes and we just succession them.
And that makes more sense to me. I just wanted to give clarity as to whether you came once and did sixty minutes and then we were done. But you are going into each classroom, okay?
Yep. So each teacher would see us four times. So it may, in the elementary level, it may be one a quarter.
Okay.
And then there is, there are follow-up activities to be done with rethink labels. So you said additional resources.
Yeah, that's sort of.
With rethink labels, there is additional resources with rethink labels. But overall, there are not additional resources yet, yet.
And for the high school students, how are you engaging them as far as, because they can be a tough sell. So how are you, and I guess you don't have to go into too great a detail, but have you had a really good response from the older children? Are they feeling like this is really, because they can, like I said, they can be a tough sell sometimes. So what are you doing that would really?
So the way that our format works, we always make sure that we start off with icebreakers. We always make sure that we do some sort of community agreement. So we're setting the space. We really leave it up to the schools to make sure that the groups that they select, because the groups are self-selected by the schools, that you put a good group of students together, you know your students better than us. So it's kind of the same thing. Special speaker coming in, maybe this group of students that don't want to be together, things of that nature. That really, really works. Also, I want to say prep work is very, very important for us. So to have the students know who we are prior to us coming in really helps. And how that is done, if it's done through all of the English classes, if it's a brief introduction, if it is done in the all ninth grade assembly and diversity center is there, we pop our heads in and we say hello so the kids are a little bit more familiar. It really works for the very first time with us coming into a school for them to know who we are. We don't get too much pushback as far as participation. The students participate because we start off with something fun. We do some icebreaker activities and we lead up into kind of the heated conversations.
No, I just want to make sure, I mean, of course I have.
I have a question for Marty, but I don't think she has to keep standing for that, so.
What's that?
No, I have a question on the funding for Marty, but you don't have to keep standing for this. No, no, I do.
Okay.
Because I know this is, it's a little different. It's a city-county fund expenditure, if you can touch on that. Or I'm sorry, Ms. Powers, how that is put together in our.
Right. So different flow of revenue source. This is not general fund dollars. These are city-county dollars that we secure through the Ka'aukani Educational Service Center.
Okay. Yes, eh, okay. Thank you.
So, you know, I've done work similar to this. I've been in education for over twenty-five years. And I've done a lot of work with respect to school improvement, instructional strategies, a lot of work around social justice and integrating that into school improvement instructional strategy. So I'm very familiar with this kind of work. And what I will say is that this kind of thing has to be done in a comprehensive way. It's a multi-fold, it's a multifaceted and problematic approach. And so I think that the planning, long-term planning and planning well ahead of time, I think is, you know, is needed. I appreciate the fact that these conversations have been ongoing for some time, six months, leading up to, you know, this evening. So and I appreciate the work that you guys do just in other school districts. I have heard of you, although I haven't worked with you directly. I can appreciate what you do and the time that you take in getting it done. Also, you know, I think I also appreciate the fact that it's customized, it's differentiated. And more importantly, most importantly, it's research-based. I saw a lot of the, you know, bullet points there with respect to some of the strategies. One that stood out to me was appreciative inquiry. And that's been around a long time. And so I just want our community to understand and know that this isn't, this isn't new. A lot of these practices have been around a long time. And I think that Twinsburg City Schools and other surrounding school districts, if they haven't involved themselves in this kind of work by now, they should be doing it. We live in a multicultural society and our student population is nearly forty percent multicultural. It's just something that's, there's a necessity for this kind of professional development and offering to be done within our school district and not only for our students. This is even more critical for our staff. And it's something that I think that if done in the right way, and I think that this is done in the right way, I think that there's a lot of care that has been taken into consideration and making sure that the right approach is taken here. And I feel that a lot of the things that you guys offer and how you go about doing it is very appropriate for this school district, very necessary for this school district. So, you know, I'm looking forward to your findings. I do also agree with you is, you know, one-touch points, you know, those don't make much of an impact. And that's not just specific to what you do, that's with anything. Any kind of instructional practice or framework takes time and it has to be done over a long period of time with fidelity. So I would imagine that this isn't any different. If you're going to expect to receive or realize or recognize any kind of results, then you have to do it with repetition and you have to do it with multiple touch points. So I want to make sure that our school district is able to take full advantage of this opportunity and make sure that we do it in the right way. I appreciate the presentation, well-done, very comprehensive. And I don't have any questions, just comments. And, you know, I'm looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have remonstrance and we do have two blue cards. So given the fact that we do have people that want to speak, I will read, I'll read the rules around remonstrance. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit the blue card, which they have done, to the treasurer prior to the meeting so that they can be recognized by the board president and welcomed to make a comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent. Although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at a board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes until the total time of thirty minutes is used. Each person addressing the board is asked to give his or her name and address. So the first person I would like to bring up is Jen Ruffin.
Hey, Ms. King. My name is Jennifer Ruffin. I, my address is one zero one two five Driftwood Cove in Reminderville. I am here to discuss the two thousand seventeen volleyball tryouts. I do have a paper that I'd actually like you to look at if I may pass it on. Would that be okay? The paper that you're looking at now is the paper that was given to the girls who were cut from the volleyball team. There was no explanation, there was no discussion afterwards. They were literally handed that paper inside of an envelope. My daughter has played since seventh grade and her volleyball career at Twinsburg ended with that letter. I do have questions regarding written information that was not submitted. I know in two thousand sixteen at tryouts, the girls were given a list of skills to work on. They were in writing notified of what they would be tested on and judged and, you know, everything. And this year, there was no verbal information nor written of what they would be tested on, even when they got to tryouts. That was not, that was not mentioned. Also, tryouts were supposed to be, I believe, two days or three days. But on the second day, she decided to extend them. The coach said she needed more data. She was doing everything by data. There was nothing written that tryouts were extended and no parents were notified of that as well. It was just through the kids. She said she did the extension because there was a lot of borderline players and she had to, she needed more time for data. During tryouts, there was never any communication as to how they were doing, what they should be working on. I mean, if you have four days and you notice someone on the first day, I think that if something's wrong, just coaching, you're not helping them, but just say, hey, this is what you're doing wrong or something to that effect. There was nothing written nor verbal given again. I actually met at, it was supposed to be a freshman coaching meeting. And she said, we asked her how she decided on the team. And she said she used strict data. That was a data. And somebody said, I think somebody reiterated and said, you only use data. And she said, yes, just data. When I had a second meeting on the same day with just the coach, Mr. Fantone, myself and my daughter's JO coach, she said to me, she said, I'll let you start with questions. And I said, why did you cut my daughter? And she said, and I quote, she was cocky and acted like she'd already made the team. She said she also asked too many questions. I then tried to explain to her how Anaya learns, you know, Anaya asks a lot of questions. That's how my daughter is. Everyone learns differently. Maybe she needed to clarify something. The questions were never answered and she said she would just turn to another coach, roll her eyes and state, didn't I just say that? Which is, you know, embarrassing enough to my daughter. Then she said, when I was trying to explain to her about how Anaya learns, she said she asked too many questions. And then she said, and this is quoted, to be honest, I didn't feel like dealing with that this year. So that is why my daughter was cut from the team. It had nothing to do with her data or her scores. I didn't think that, in my opinion, it's the teacher nor the coach or anyone in a situation, the board, teachers, anyone, to decide whether or not you want to work with a child based on their ability to learn, based on their ability to ask questions. You can't just say, you know what, you asked too many questions, I'm not going to help you anymore. I don't think that's appropriate. There was no feedback at any time, I think I already mentioned that. Anaya repeatedly asked if she could be judged on passing. She's a middle hitter. She was denied that because she said, no, I need you in middle. And Anaya said, I can pass, I would like to pass. And she said, no, I need you in middle. On the first day of the team practice, she was notified that evening by five different girls at different times that one of the first things that the coach said, is that my time limit? I was like, hold on. One of the first things she said was, the middles will be moving around because I need them to pass, which is a direct opposite of what she told Anaya. My daughter has played volleyball in Twinsburg since seventh grade. She has played JO for five years. She has currently had twenty-eight college recruiters contact her that want to recruit her. Her JO coach is in constant contact with five of them. He singled out five of them that want her schedule, you know, they want to talk to her. I do not understand how twenty-eight colleges would like to see my daughter play for them, but she's not good enough to play for the Twinsburg High School team. She addressed varsity as a sophomore on multiple occasions. She was a starting varsity player as a junior and this year she was cut. She is devastated, to say the least. I mean, she is emotionally not okay. She's very, very upset. She's been waiting for senior night since seventh grade. These girls start at seventh grade and they go, you know, to senior night. And when you're in seventh grade, it's such a big deal and every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And last year, that's all they talked about was, we can't wait till next senior night because there's so many seniors. And three of them were cut. And all three of them were, have played since seventh grade. I feel that this, this trial process was wrong. I don't feel it was handled correctly. I think there should have been written and verbal things said to the parents and to the girls. I also think that the reason that my daughter was cut is completely unfair. Her skill level is at or above the rest of her team. And her asking questions, which annoyed the coach, is not a reason to cut her. I was counting on, we were counting on scholarships for college. I mean, she's that good. I called her JO coach to tell her that she didn't, and he didn't believe me. And he actually came to two of the meetings with me. So I guess I'm asking the board to do what is right because this is wrong. And there are so many people who agree with me and agree with, I've had parents whose girls. whose girls made it call me, what happened, I don't understand what happened. I think this process is wrong. I think the way that she, the way that she chose the team was wrong. And I'm asking the Board of Education to please review how she did it and, I don't know, possibly do it over. I don't think, I don't know if that's a possibility, but my daughter deserves to play.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Tim Adams.
My name is Tim Adams. I live at one oh two six seven Andover Drive in Twinsburg, Ohio. I think Jen actually did an excellent job of stating her case. And the case applies to my twin daughters also. One of my twin daughters was a returning varsity player from last year. She sat varsity her sophomore year. My other twin daughter played in varsity matches last year and was JV, but she is a three-time Tiger Award winner for the volleyball program with three different coaches giving her that same award. I'd like to reiterate the fact that there was no criteria given to the girls prior to tryouts. I, in my meeting with Coach Thomas and Mr. Fantone, was told that my daughter, while waiting to do the next drill, was talking in line, so she was given zeros. I am of the opinion, I have nothing but my own opinion, that this coach used the attitude score to control what she wanted to be on the team. There is another player who was cut, that I am not going to mention name or any of the conversation, but other than, she was given a zero because of a conversation that was overheard by one of, mis-overheard by one of the other coaches. This should have been a tryout, not a way for the coach to get rid of girls she think thought might be a problem. None of these girls have ever caused problems. None of these parents have ever caused problems. As Jen stated, these girls have been together since seventh grade. I am pretty sure that if we were troubled parents or troubled children, you would have already heard about these girls coming up. The devastation that it created, because, I'll be honest, my girls never saw it coming. They definitely never saw it coming based on attitude. Both of them have played for multiple coaches in this city. And I've never had one of them come to me and say they have an attitude problem with either one of my daughters. The other issue I have is when a coach tells you that they're using data, 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 they know that their decision doesn't look right. They know their decision that they're making is going to be disputed, and that's why they put it out right away. And she did that, she did that before she handed out the envelopes. Make sure you tell your parents, I have data to support my decisions, and that they shouldn't come after me. And when a coach tells you that in the tryout, you know she knows what she's doing isn't gonna look right. There are freshman parents, there are senior parents. I wouldn't be standing here if I had these parents telling me I was wrong. But every single one of them are telling me this was, some of them call it bullying, some of them call it a travesty. The actions that this first-time coach, who again, in her speech right before she handed out the papers, said that she's never really had to hold a tryout because in her old school system, the pay-to-play fee was eight hundred dollars. So you know the people that showed up to play were the ones that could play. She didn't have to worry about forty-six girls showing up. Other school systems around us have sixty to seventy girls show up for tryouts. Their tryouts are done in two days. Our tryout takes four days, and I truly believe she extended it because you had players that missed the first day because they didn't have their physical forms in place, and she didn't have the data she needed to back up the decision she wanted to make. You know, Mr. Curtis and Mrs. Powers mentioned how great the vetting program is for the teachers here, and it's diligent. I'm curious as to what the vetting program was for the varsity coach this year. According to Mrs. Powers, the job was listed the last day of May. I believe the first week of June, they were recommended, but it was found that the varsity coach did not have her proper certification in place. So she was not able to be put in place until the end of June. This is a, you know, if we're gonna vet, as I explained to Mrs. Powers in the one meeting I was in, she said there was never a danger of the varsity program not being in place this year because of the levy. All their issues may have on the lower programs. So we had multiple candidates that wanted the job back in April. But we were told that the job couldn't be listed. And I just don't understand how we can vet our teachers so strictly, and we struggle to vet our athletic, our athletic coaches. I will end quickly here, because like I said, Jen, I think, did a great job of commenting. You know, I just want you to know, I'm not a nutjob parent. I'm not in your guys' offices every day. If I didn't think my parents, my kids could play, I wouldn't be here. I think they can play. This is wrong, and you guys should fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I did have a couple of questions. Were either of you or your children told how many athletes would be accepted onto the team, either verbally or in writing?
No.
Were any of your children interviewed by the coach during the process of the tryout? Were they sat down and interviewed individually?
No, in fact, one of my big complaints is, since this has happened, she hasn't even taken a step to reach out to them.
Okay.
Mine had her for study hall today, and she did not take a step to even have a discussion with them.
And were your children provided with either the rubric or the requirements of what she would be evaluating them on in the tryout at any point prior to the tryout?
I don't believe anybody was provided with that.
Okay, so you did not receive anything in writing, and you did not receive anything verbally?
No.
And the only notification that you did receive was this actual piece of paper? They were handed it at the end of the tryout?
Yes.
There was no communication either verbally or written after this?
No.
Or during the process? This is the only notification?
It's the only notification that I got, other than sitting down with her and Coach Fantone at our request on Monday, the Monday following that Friday.
Okay.
But we requested that there be a conversation with the girls, but that has not happened.
Okay, so no conversation has been had with the girls yet. And my final question, in the previous years, how many children were kept in previous years? Is it consistent with?
I don't, I don't know if there were any cuts last year. The varsity team typically has, typically had, last year, the team that played typically had between fourteen and sixteen girls on.
So fourteen to sixteen, and this year we have approximately the same?
That's information that, you know, we already have, and we can get from the coaching staff.
Okay, well, I'm trying to see if there's, you know, I'm asking them questions so that I have an understanding of what they were provided with. All right, and anything else that you think we should know about the process that you felt?
I think, I think the process was awful. I think, I, you know, Coach Brennan, who I think was four to five years, I'm not exactly sure how long, my oldest daughter went through her, and my youngest one's obviously until this year. There was always a, basically a rubric, this is what you're being judged on, this is how you're being judged. At no time were they judged on standing in line and having a conversation while they were waiting to do a drill, which I believe is a very arbitrary way to judge.
So prior to this, you've never, the girls have never been judged on attitude or work ethic? From your understanding?
I don't believe so.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item H, Treasurers' Reports and Recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read H one, two, three, and four together. H one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of August second, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of March, excuse me, for the month of June, 2017, bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report, and financial report by fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of June, 2017. The total, including payroll, is three million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. And four, that the Huntington National Bank, as a national banking association, is qualified under applicable law and regulations to be a depository and is hereby designated as a depository of the Twinsburg City School District. Do I have a motion to approve H one through four?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solura. Any comments or discussion?
Just one thing on the last, the fourth one with Huntington National Bank. Previously, we were with First Merit. First Merit was bought out or merged or whatever with Huntington Bank. So there's no longer First Merit, now it's Huntington Bank. And really what this says is Huntington Bank's just kind of getting all their paperwork straightened out. They've absorbed the paperwork from First Merit, and now they're wanting to have their own paperwork done. Earlier, like last year, we did the depository contracts with several banks. But this is just kind of getting the paperwork straightened out on, for Huntington, they, you know, on their end. So just getting a lot, there may be some more stuff coming through as First Merit's paperwork is finally absorbed into Huntington Bank. So you may see another one or two of these kind of come through.
Thank you, Mr. Aho. Any other comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and I pass as five zero. Next is item I, action items, personnel. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read I one through three together. I one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated license, personnel, and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion to accept items I one through three?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and I pass as five zero. Moving on to action items, new business, J one through seven. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items one through seven together. J one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the donation from Ohio Piles Print Incorporated, four ten Dinnerbell Road, Ohio Pile, PA, one five four seven zero, to Twinsburg High School in the amount of one hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty cents. Donation from sale of Twinsburg apparel at local retailers to be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies, per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation of pencils valued at six dollars and thirteen cents from Kula Foundation, the Kula Foundation, sixty-six hundred Peachtree Dunwoody Road, six hundred Embassy Row, Suite two five five, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three two eight, for Wilcox Primary School, per the attached exhibit. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the list of technology items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the first reading of the following new and revised Board of Education policies. And I'm gonna refrain from reading all of these, other than to say that the comments from Mr. Felber represent that this is a first reading and that we'll be doing this a second time. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for overnight extended student trip for the senior students in the contemporary issues of Twenty-First Century Course to travel to Cincinnati, Ohio, to visit the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and then to Ripley, Ohio, to visit two homes that were an integral part of the Underground Railroad from October eleventh, 2017, to October twelfth, 2017. This trip will be paid in full by the participating students and chaperones as sent to the board under separate cover. Six, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract and service agreement with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio for diversity training and education for the 2017, 2018 school year at a cost of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. This is a city-county fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. And seven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the job descriptions for hallway monitor B as attached, per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion to approve J one through seven?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any other comments or discussion? I will thank, let's see, Ohio Pile and the Kula Foundation for their donations. As always, we appreciate any and all donations that assist us in an instructional manner or other capacities to help our students and staff. Any other comments?
All right, fasten your seatbelts. As a policy committee promise, we'll just go real quick over you as a first reading of these policies. You'll notice that many of these are revised, which means the existing policies are online and easily reviewed, and of course, anybody wanting to see the changed language that the board is reviewing, that's available. A lot of times, this is housekeeping, this is legal changes, things that have come down from our legal partners and other schools. Zero one five zero is a slight change to the Joint Vocational School District board appointment in terms of the credentials to be on board. It was a little vague in the past language. Pretty much anybody that drove by a business would qualify. And so now they've tightened it to either be an existing board member or qualified experience in some type of joint vocational education. So that's before us as well. Twenty-four thirty deals with the eligibility and gets into some STEM, and community schools regarding district-sponsored clubs and activities. Twenty-four thirty oh two, kind of along the same lines with dealing with new teams and what it means to be a new team and the eligibility to play in those teams with regards to academics. And let's see, we're at twenty-four thirty one, some of the same cleanup there. Twenty-four sixty one, clarify some of the rights and rules both the parents and the district have regarding the recording of meetings, if I'd be safe to say IEP and those types of meetings, Mrs. Friday? I mean, this is, wrong department, sorry. For Jen's head, it's like, what? We always say Mrs. Friday, so it's just. Twenty-four, let's see, where are we, twenty-four sixty four, a little bit more criteria, updates on the gifted language that's used there. Twenty-four twenty three, further explores testing and percentages. A lot of that has changed and continues to change from the states. Primarily, you may remember the less than two percent of the time rule with regard to testing. That is what is changing in our policies. Again, a lot of times, these are not only reflective but following administrative and state laws that have changed. Where am I, thirty-one, twenty point oh eight, employment of personnel co-curricular. This primarily is another safety step in the pupil activity certification that is needed regardless of whether a teacher or other staff that are gonna be coaching or doing something with the students in a sponsored activity. Those have to have that certificate. We start to get into, a lot of times, you'll see policies that have thirty-one or thirty-two hundred designations, forty-two hundred designations. You'll see a lot of times they're repeated. That's because they're, some are for classified staff, some are for sophisticated, or certificated staff. And that is the next group in terms of use of tobacco weapons. staff, and that is the next group in terms of use of tobacco weapons, particularly in our weapons policy, only being cared by law enforcement. Some of that is revised and updated language. 5111 starts getting some new rules around foster care rights and the rights that these students have, as well as 511101, dealing with homeless students. And then you see, again, a new policy around children, youth, and foster care, and I believe that stemmed in Mrs. Powers from the ESSA and some of the changes that come from every Student Succeeds Act. I didn't think I'd get that right. And then, if you recall, in the old talk about lizard bags and all those kind of things, a lot of the discussion revolved around going from days to hours. So of course, policies need to change, and attendance policies, as far as designations needed to change, as we went from days to hours, and that's what 5200 is. And again, we're being a little more extended in our reading here, being a first reading. We probably won't do this on a second reading unless there's been some changes. And of course, there was a group of us that were on, what, Capitol Hill, you know, during our first protest. It was pretty mild, but it had to do with graduation points and such, and nobody got arrested, but we did get our point across to the state school board and on a chilly Columbus morning, talking about graduation requirements, and so some of those have changed. And I think we're anticipating, we'll be revisiting 5460 as our policy many more times as graduation requirements change. And again, as I mentioned, you see policies for classified and certificated. You also see policies with similar numbers for students, and hence why you see use of tobacco, drug prevention, weapons, and things being repeated. Some rules changed around expulsions and suspensions and the ability to use community service in exchange for hours at the superintendent's discretion. I'm not sure if it's changed in this law, but I know we discussed that certain, only expulsions can carry over from year to year, but suspensions can't. You know, so that was kind of an interesting discussion as the law's changed there. And then we get in a little bit on PBIS in 5630.01. And that's what I had, I could get another 20 more.
Okay. Competition here.
No competition.
I'm going to thank you in advance for your patience. I'm going to try to be as brief, but looking at policies 6320, 6325, and 6423, those are more, have to do with purchases and finances, and specifically, 6325 changes the legislation, changed the bid threshold from 25,000 to 50,000 for federal grants and funds. 6423 deals with the use of credit cards for, just a second, basically for board-approved and school-related activities only and expenses for the benefit of the district valid in proper purposes. Let's see, we've got, if I turn the page. We have policy 6700, and that has to do with Fair Labor Standards Act and some updates from the Department of Labor. 60, or 7217, same as Rob said, it has to do with weapons and that weapons can be carried by law enforcement personnel only on our school grounds. 63, 80, I'm sorry, 8210 talks about the school calendar, days to hours, and also it has to do with the lizard bags and eliminating the requirement to request Ohio Department of Education approval of online lessons. 8305 is, has to do with security information. It's a new policy, and it's ensuring our student's security and how a district would handle if there's a breach, and that we're always, that they have to certify annually that our vendors will comply with our district data information and security information. And anything else to expand on that as of now?
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. That really puts into play here practices so that we have guidelines in line should there be a breach of security, be it student's security, be it our own data as a school district. So that just adds additional rigor to our practices in the detail.
Okay, thank you. And policies 8310, 8320, and 8330 deal with public records, personnel file, and student records, and they've been revised to reflect changes made by House Bill 359, establishes Ohio Safe at Home Address Confidentiality Program, and there will be more information on that in following readings. I meant, policy number 8452, and it has to do with AEDs in the school, and that the, because of changes made by Sub-House Bill 113, it modifies instruction and staff training requirements due to cardiac arrest and use of AEDs, and basically the importance of having those in very visible places around the buildings. Policy 8500, it relates to food services and requirements from USDA regarding bad debt and unpaid meal charges. On policy 8510, it's a wellness policy, and it's the, in response to issues of issuance of the final rule, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act by USDA, needs to be looked at and updated basically every three years. And let's see, policy 890, I'm sorry, 9160, I'm already there, public attendance at school events, and it talks about basically no alcoholic beverages may be consumed on our school grounds and also off-school property, I believe, at different events. If the students are doing the same thing at another school, they can still get, basically get in trouble from a school. And 9270, equivalent education outside the schools and participation extra curricular for students not enrolled in the district. And this is a policy that's been revised to reflect changes made by Sub SB3 as adopted in 2016. These will be, once after we've had all the readings, will be in great detail for you to look at on the website. And as Rob had said earlier, if you have questions, contact the administration about these for further detail and so on. I understand.
One more time in reverse?
No. Okay, any other, any other comments on any other items? Hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and our item pass is five zero. Next is J.8, which is inter-district service contract of the ESC of Cuyahoga County. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an inter-district service area contract with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County for the 2017-2018 school year to provide a gifted coordinator curriculum supervisor, two security, safety, security liaisons, three technical resource assistants, network manager, PC support specialist, technology support specialist, and a special education consultant commencing July 1, 2017, and concluding on June 30, 2018, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion to approve J.8?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Abstain. Okay, four votes to one abstention. Okay, and next is item K., miscellaneous. Any comments on miscellaneous?
I have a couple, a couple reflections. First of all, hopefully the Indians won't get word of the great arm of Mr. Chad Walker, who showed up at Relay for Life and within minutes dunked RSRO Officer Ron Fraschella in the dunking booth. We have it on video, it has gone viral. Bauer's a little nervous and the Indians, but hey, if we make the run, you might get called up. But thank you for the community and the schools and the city and the township and all those that supported Relay for Life. Today is the last first day of school for many students, including mine. Your board is reflective of parents that have graduates, that have kids in school and all those different ages, and it just comes back full circle for me as a parent of seniors, that my great niece, yes, I'm old, my great niece is now a Tiger Cub at Wilcox. And so, kind of span, you know, we make our decisions not just for our kids and the ones we're related to, but all those in between. It's just kind of an interesting time. Put on your seatbelts.
Relay for Life, it was a great event, so I just want, I know you were a big part of that. It was a lot of good activities and a lot of great events at Relay. And Twins Days, there was numerous parents and students from all the organizations and sports and clubs who helped with Twins Day, so for those who organize that and helped with the coordination of volunteers, thank you, and thank you for all the volunteers. And that, that's always a great event. And just basically, welcome back to all the kids and the teachers and the staff and administration and everybody involved in our schools, and just thank you in advance for everything you do for our kids.
I'm going to kind of piggyback on a few of those things. I, for the first time, had an opportunity to attend the Relay for Life survivors dinner, and very well done, exceptional food, and just a great, great way to celebrate people that have, you know, anybody that's gone through the journey of cancer. It's very difficult, and it was just very nice, and I know Rob's family was very involved in that process. So, you know, we have some really great community members that give back, so I wanted to thank them, and also the Leotas, I believe, were very involved in that as well. Also, as Tina said, the athletic boosters and the music boosters and, I'm probably, I don't know, am I missing any groups? But Twins Days is a huge event, it's one of their biggest moneymakers. They do all of the parking, they sell all of the beverages, and I can tell you that some of these parents put in, you know, a full week of hours, you know, in a couple days, and it's all for the benefit of our students. So those parents, thank you so much. You know, giving back so that our kids can have more is, you know, what, you know, community service is all about. So thank you for being so relevant in that. And as Rob said, I have a senior as well this year, so we'll be seeing them walk across the stage. So it was also, you know, the first, or the last first day for my son, and then I have one that graduated, and she's in college, and then I have a sixth grader. So it's fun to see the different levels of excitement and different levels of, you know, how, you know, how the school year's going to go. So yes, congratulations, seniors, good luck this year, and have a great time.
Just thank you. Buses started this morning, that was good. All the kids got picked up, all the kids got taken home. I heard from a couple of teachers that everything seemed to go well in the buildings, seemed like a good class, looking forward to a good year. A lot of different changes in the district, a lot of new things. I'm looking forward to the unveiling, so to say, of the scoreboard here shortly. Community is very excited about it. That's all I hear is, you know, when's it going to be? I want to see it, you know, they see all the tweets of the trainings and the little videos, so, you know, again, thank you, you know, especially you two, for your efforts in that. I know there was a lot of long meetings, a lot of long legal back and forth in negotiating contracts, so, you know, and again, all at a, no cost to taxpayers. So thank you for that, that, you know, continues to show how, you know, the district is constantly moving forward, not only for the kids but for the community as well. It'll be a very nice, very nice thing for the community to see. You know, looking forward to a great year. Summer flew by. I know my kids and I think everybody else's kids wish it was a little bit longer, but, you know, looking forward to a good year, and from everything that I heard, it's starting out great today, so let's keep it going.
Yeah, and I'll echo a few things. School opening is always like a great time, and there's a lot of optimism in the air. You see the kids out near the bus stops, waiting in their brand-new clothes and book bags, and, you know, they're all smiling in the beginning of the day. I don't know so much at the end of the day, depends on what building, especially the high school. I have a son who just started ninth grade, so he's going into the high school. Had an opportunity to attend the ninth grade orientation, and I must say, very well done. Kudos to the high school staff and how well-coordinated that whole thing is, especially when you got all these freshmen there in the beginning, and they're running all over the building, and sometimes it's like herding cats to get them away from finding their classes in their lockers to getting them in the auditorium so that they can be introduced to the staff. But each and every person that got up to speak did a very good job, explained everything thoroughly. Counseling staff, phenomenal. I'm actually on the, not the Twitter, not the Twitter thing, but the, but the text thing.
The internet.
I get texts, I get texts from my son's counselor now, and I got a text last night saying that, make sure you tell your son that everything is going to be okay, you know, you might get lost, but everybody gets lost, like, it was, I mean, that was, that was great. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge the high school staff for how they handle that, and making sure that they get a smooth transition from the middle school to the high school. Very exciting. Twins Days, yeah, I was involved in that. I had an opportunity to drive around one of the carts, and you meet a lot of interesting people, and I actually met a few families that were new to Twinsburg, had just moved to Twinsburg, and so this was their first taste of Twinsburg, and they couldn't have been more happier. They were thrilled and blown away and looking forward to what else Twinsburg has to offer. So that was pretty cool. And then last but not least, football. Yeah, the scoreboard is one thing, you know, but my son, he also plays on the freshman football team, and so I've had an opportunity to see some scrimmages, kind of pal around with some of the football parents, and I got to say that there's a lot of, there's a lot of optimism in the air. I've had a chance to, you know, see some of the practices and throughout conditioning and all of the activities that they have these kids going through, you can really see a real true sense of camaraderie with this group of kids. They also, over this past weekend, I think it was the Boosters Organization sponsored it, where they all had, got a chance to go to the swimming pool and just have a ball, have some fun, eat some food, ice cream, and it was a mixture of just the middle school as well as the high school coaches. I think T. Mike was there as well, and all of the parents, and it was just a great atmosphere to be a part of, and, you know, I'm really looking forward to that carrying over to the football field so that, you know, we have some success on the football field, but more importantly, our kids have a great experience and have fun. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that. We'll be moving on to item L., which is executive session, and we do have, and that's, we do have a need for executive session.
Mr. Curtis, if I could interject one thing that I forgot to mention, just another community service announcement. Wednesday, August 30 is our back-to-school bicentennial celebration at Twinsburg Township Square from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our bicentennial committee has been busy planning a lot of family-friendly activities. We are going to have many of our high school students who are going to help run activities. Kids will get a ticket to get checked off, and at the end of it, they'll get a little trinket, a little bicentennial trinket. So we hope our parents come out in droves, and one of the things that they will be doing are those kindness rocks for the bicentennial. So kids, don't forget to bring your mom and dad on August 30 at 6 o'clock down at the square. We'll have entertainment, the high school band will play, I understand, show choir students will perform, as well as some of our orchestra students. So it'll be a very nice evening for our families.
Thank you for that. Okay. So the Board of Education, we do have a need for executive session, and the Board of Education will enter into executive session at 9:12 p.m. to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy Number 0166A. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, we will go into executive session, and I do not feel that there's a necessity for us to reconvene publicly. Thank you.